Good afternoon and welcome to our audience here at the Ferris Theater in the Lexington Public Library. I'm Liza Holland, a member of the League of Women Voters, and I will be serving as moderator for this forum for candidates for the Fayette County School Board District One, which roughly includes the triangle between Main Street in Leestown and Georgetown Road. This is a special election to fill a vacancy. Our sponsors this evening are Lexington Public Library and the League of Women Voters of Lexington. This forum will be available later on by going to the library or the league websites. Both candidates on the ballot for school board were invited this evening, and they are both here, Ms. Kristi Morris and Mr. Will Nash. We will be following the League of Women Voters policies and procedures for this forum, and league members Donna Blue and Liz Sheehan will serve as timers for us. In order to give the candidates a fair chance to be heard, we have randomly drawn for the order of opening remarks and questions in a second time for the order of closing remarks. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to introduce themselves and 90 seconds to respond to questions. Questions have been created by the sponsors, and we are also taking questions from the audience. Finally, we will give each candidate 90 seconds for closing remarks. We will use the second drawing for the order of the closing comments. And now, we will begin with the opening comments, and the candidates will go in order of the first drawing, and we will hear from Mr. Nash first. You have 90 seconds.
Great, thank you. I'd like to start by thanking the league for hosting this event, and of course, the Lexington Public Library for having us in this beautiful space. Thirteen years ago, I chose to work in public education because teaching is the most consequential profession in the world. Since graduating from UK, I've spent time as a middle school math teacher. I've worked in teacher recruitment and certification, and I currently support the professional learning of principals and teachers across the country so that they can maximize their impact on students. My vast and diverse experiences working in public education are why I'm a champion for all students, no matter their background or zip code. My history fighting on behalf of students, my reliance on data and best practices, my ability to ask tough questions, and my unwavering belief in all students is why I was appointed to the Fayette County School Board. I'm asking the voters of District One to keep me on the school board because of my record of achievement thus far and the work we still have to do. I fought and will continue to fight for fiscal accountability and transparency, and I'll bring the voice of my constituents to the board. Fayette County has a good school system, but I believe we can be great for all students. In fact, I believe Fayette County can have the best school system in the state. Today, I look forward to sharing more about how we can become great and the role of the school board in doing so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Morris?
Hi, I would first like to also thank the league. This is not the first time that I've been here, and I'm always grateful to have the opportunity for us to come and ask questions and see who's going to be on our ballot. Also, thank you to the library for supporting the event. My name is Kristi Morris, and I am a lot different candidate, a different type of stakeholder, I guess you could say. I moved here for our schools when I decided that I wanted to have children, and so I have worked alongside our schools, alongside our teachers, to advocate for children. I helped cofound a charity that feeds kids over holidays and weekends. I also serve as the liaison to our sister school, which is an underserved school in the community, and I've helped establish a family food bank there. I've also served as one of the only volunteers at that school on a consistent basis. So now, luckily, we've developed a partnership with a sorority that's adopted that school. So my main concern isn't just my own children, it's our neighbors and our friends, and I've spent years advocating and trying to protect children from poverty and hunger and privatization of our schools. The reason I decided to run is because I will do what's right for our children and our teachers, and the teachers have felt enough confidence in me to endorse me, and also, the working families here in Lexington have endorsed me.
Thank you so very much. With the draw, you will take the first question, Ms. Morris. So why is it that you want to become a school board member?
The reason that I wanted to become a school board member is broad. I didn't see it coming at first. It's something that I did kind of decide on a whim. I have had trouble with our curriculum, or I haven't been happy with our curriculum as a parent, and what I've seen as a volunteer in the other school is that at Rosa Parks, which is a school that has quite a lot of resources, a lot of stay-at-home moms, we actually have the ability to fundraise to buy the programs that we want, even though taxpayers are buying curriculum that we're currently not using. At my sister school right down the road, they're stuck with the curriculum that the board is providing. I think that that further the divides within our communities. I would like to see more of a local control from parents and teachers because I trust the parents and teachers will make the best decisions for our kids, and because of that, I want to put my name in and hopefully make some changes.
Thank you so much. Mr. Nash?
Sure, so for me, I guess the question is, why do I want to stay on the school board? I've been on the board for 11 months, almost 11 months, and I feel like I've contributed in a lot of meaningful ways to the direction of the school system. I voted to increase pay for substitute teachers, I voted to increase pay for bus drivers, I voted to increase pay for our most tenured teachers, those working 25 to 30 years. I've voted to fund strategic capital projects across the district, and most importantly, I've asked a lot of tough questions about fiscal accountability and transparency. So I want to remain on the school board for a few reasons. One is to continue the fight for fiscal accountability and transparency. I want to continue to be an advocate for all students, whether they live in District One or not, and I want to see all of our schools become truly great schools so that the conversation about charter schools can be moot, as long as we have great schools in every neighborhood and in every community, so that every parent has the privilege of sending their child to a fantastic school that's preparing them for the future, no matter what that might be.
Thank you so much. You will take the next question first. With decreases in state funding to local school districts and increases in student enrollment here in Fayette County, how do you propose to meet the educational needs of our students?
Yeah, great question. So we're fortunate to live in a county where the tax base and the value of the tax base keeps increasing. So even though I voted not to raise taxes, we're seeing about $10 million additional dollars flow into the district, which helps significantly. At the same time, though, to your point, we've seen funding from the state be cut for professional development, for learning resources, for transportation, and so it does lead to a lot of tough decision-making at the board level. I've served on multiple boards, ranging in size from just a few hundred thousand dollars as a nonprofit to many millions of dollars, and so I have a lot of experience with budgets and with making tough decisions when resources are constrained. I think specifically, we have to trust our schools, we have to trust our site-based councils, and we have to trust our principals to let the board know what it is they need. I'm proud to have built a relationship with all of the principals in District One. I emailed them before we even started going through the budget process to ask what they needed to be truly successful and where they felt most constrained, and then I used that information directly from principals to inform some of the questions and actions that we took on the budget in the current fiscal year. So I'll continue to do just that, engaging stakeholders, leveraging their feedback, and trusting the experts that we have in schools to make decisions that are best for kids.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
The Supreme Court ruled that it's actually the state's responsibility to make sure that every child in Kentucky has an equitable education, and although I do recognize that we are lucky enough to have a tax base here to support our schools, when we accept that as the answer, it hurts children all over the Commonwealth, in particular where I'm from, which is eastern Kentucky. As I said, I moved here for these schools, and that was part of it. The funding here was apparent to me when I came to college, that they had programs that I didn't have, like AutoCAD and resources that were not available to me. So this is where I chose to have my own family for that very reason. So I also, of course, support professional development for teachers and hate that that was cut. I'd like to find some way to pay for that. It will be a priority for me, but accepting that as an answer is unacceptable to me. I've spent years lobbying in Frankfurt, and I know that I have a quiet voice, but I show up and I fight for our kids and our teachers, and I do it whenever I need to, not when it's convenient for me. Sometimes my children are sick, sometimes, you know, I have to get a babysitter, but what's important to me is these schools, and I have a record of fighting for resources for our community.
Thank you so much. Next question goes to you first, Ms. Morris. What are the unique needs of District One that you intend to address?
What I've seen as a parent and a volunteer at these schools is that more power needs to be given to the site-based decision-making councils. We should be able to choose our own curriculum. We pay taxes for that money, and right now, the resources are being wasted on materials that we don't want, and some of them. Our new science curriculum is just an example. Several teachers and parents have had a discussion with me about how unhappy they are with it. I can't online figure out who piloted the program, but we should have more of a say-so in our curriculum. Our community is very diverse, and the needs between one school and the next, one mile down the road, are very different, and so to put us all in a box and have us to choose the same exact curriculum is not appropriate for every school. James Lane Allen and Cardinal Valley have a large Spanish-speaking population, and they're having to use their Title I money to buy curriculum in Spanish for some of their students. So I think that if the parents and the teachers could make those decisions on a local level that that would best serve our kids and best serve our resources or account for our resources.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
On the whole, I don't know that District One's needs are different than the county as a whole. I think District One is a microcosm of the larger district, given the schools that are contained within District One. As I've been on the board and as I've spoken to more than 1,000 constituents, I hear the same thing over and over from parents. One is they want high-quality schools for their children, no matter where their children go to school. Two is that they want safe and secure schools, and they want us to iron out some of the kinks with our safety plan, which I can appreciate. And third, they want us to continue to focus on equity and on achievement gaps and on ensuring that all of our schools are high-quality. And so I will do just that, as I've done in the past through my votes on the board, and continue to look out for the quality of schools, the safety of schools, and that we maintain a high focus on equity.
You'll take this next question first, Mr. Nash. It's kind of a follow-up. What do you see as the biggest challenge in education in Fayette County in the next five years?
Yeah, the biggest challenge has to be achievement gaps across the county. Unfortunately, if you send a child to one school, their outcomes might look radically different than if that child goes to a different school, and that isn't right, and parents shouldn't be forced to have to buy a home in one part of the county or another because of the quality of the schools. I think we have to maintain a very laser-like focus on achievement gaps so that we can promise all students a high-quality education. We need to provide schools with the funding that they need in order to hire the personnel that they need in the unique situations where student needs are different, and we need to recognize that student needs are different. You know, a student attending Cardinal Valley might have different needs than a student attending Rosa Parks, and as a district, we should build community relationships and provide wraparound services that help address those different needs. So I think that we have to continue to focus on high-quality teaching materials, we have to continue to focus on achievement gaps, and until all of our schools are great, we have to maintain that district focus.
Thank you so much.
The fight over public education is very real. We are having to protect our resources and our teachers from every angle, from the national level to the state level at this point, so I think that our biggest struggle will be, legislatively speaking, that the board will have to get more involved, be more vocal, push back harder against our legislators to protect not only our kids here in Fayette County, but across the Commonwealth. I do agree that achievement gaps are our main focus, but I want to concentrate on what we know works, like smaller classroom sizes and diversity in our classrooms, not just at the top, but studies have shown that when children have teachers that look like them, when they're minorities, that they have higher rates of college education. I would also like to continue reaching out to the community to develop partnerships to not only meet the needs of our kids academically, but the other resources that they don't have. Our kids are really not that different, so to speak, they have different resources. The kids in Beaumont get to go to preschool. The kids at James Lane Allen are largely not ready for kindergarten, and so that's what I hear from the teachers there. We know that pre-K is important to our kids, and I'd like to have that be a priority.
Ms. Morris, this will go to you first, following up on the safety issue. Were you in favor of having metal detectors installed at our high schools, and what ideas do you have for making schools safe?
As a parent, yes, I'm very concerned about the safety of my kids, and I do support the metal detectors. I was happy to pay that tax. What does make me question the tax that paid for that, though, is a lot of that was capital expenses, one-time expenses, and yet the rate still stays the same. I know that we had set aside a lot of money to hire more mental health providers, and I think that that was a great start, and I would like to prevent guns from being entered into the building instead of bringing guns into the building. So I do not support arming teachers, and I would have to see a lot of data that shows that introducing an armed official of any sort would keep our kids safe, because right now, I don't think the data shows it, but I would be willing to look into that.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
I agree. I would have absolutely voted for the safety tax if I were on the board at that time. I know that the story about Lafayette implementing metal detectors has recently been in the news, and I think the temporary inconvenience of a long line pales in comparison to the tragedy of a school shooting, and we should keep in perspective exactly what we're trying to avoid and continue to improve our processes. So my idea is to continue to implement our plan. We have a 10-point safety plan that's robust. It has achieved national accolades. In fact, Senate Bill One was modeled after Fayette County's work, and so I think that we should feel good about the quality of our plan, and we simply need to implement it. We've made a lot of progress in hiring school resource officers, we've made a lot of progress in hiring social workers and mental health counselors. If you've been to a school lately, you've noticed increased cameras, increased door alarms, many more locks on doors. So what I'm hopeful for is that we can continue to implement that plan, and then in the upcoming legislative session, I'm hopeful that legislators will fund the plan, because if they do that and if they provide all counties in Kentucky with the resources similar to what Fayette County has, we might be actually be able to lower our tax rate back down and use state funding to support that work, which would be a real win for the taxpayers. So I think that we should continue to implement the plan, we should continue to improve processes where needed, and we should trust our schools to do what's best for kids and to provide a safe environment.
Thank you so much. You will take this question first. This question comes from our audience. How do you look at student achievement data to distinguish between the effects of the school, the effects of the students, the community, the efforts of their family resources, et cetera?
Yeah, this is a million-dollar question because it's so complicated to figure out why are some students successful in some environments and why are they unsuccessful or less successful in other environments. I think that, you know, there are schools across the country, and given my day job, I have the experience to step into some of these schools who are providing high-quality education and high-quality outcomes for students, no matter their background, and we know that it's many things that determines that. It's the quality of the curriculum, it's the quality of the teacher and the principal, and it's the community partnerships that we build, and it's also the wraparound services. And so it can be difficult to isolate those and say which has more of an impact and which doesn't, but what is less difficult is saying which schools have those things and which don't, and providing those that don't with those services so that we can eliminate that as a potential cause for any gaps that we see.
Thank you. Ms. Morris?
I'd like to first say that I think the way and the method that we use is flawed. I don't think that it's healthy to look at a child as a number or a community as a score or a school to be judged against another school. Having a benchmark is important, but talking about our scores and our testing to the degree that is life for parents and teachers is not good for our children or our community. In my opinion, we're wasting a lot of resources testing our children above and beyond what the state requires. I would like to see less testing and us to look at the whole child, the whole picture of the community, because a lot of the times, the difference is not in, well, it's definitely not an ability. Our kids are all brilliant, they're all wonderful, and they have great potential. We need to give them the same resources and look at our neighborhoods and our communities and do better at home.
Thank you so much. I want to go with another question from the audience. How do you envision balancing the various roles of school board members? The curriculum, the business decisions, the legal matters, personnel issues, et cetera? Is that me or you? Mr. Nash, I believe that's you.
Sure, so some of those are easy to balance because the school board has no role in them. So curriculum is decided at the school level. Despite what my opponent said all day, each individual school decides what curriculum they teach. When it comes to personnel, the only employee the school district employs is the superintendent, and so the most important role I have in personnel, and in fact, the only role I have in personnel, is ensuring that we have set ambitious goals for the superintendent and that we're evaluating his or her progress to those goals, and where there isn't progress, we're providing corrective action or resources in order to achieve those goals. Other than that, I view the most important role of a school board member as being in schools, being on the ground, listening to constituents, talking to parents, talking to site-based council members, talking to principals, building relationships with all of those individuals, and being the voice for those individuals at the school board. District One is a big district, there are a lot of schools in the district, they all have unique needs, and it's important to understand those unique needs and be able to advocate for those needs when the time is right at the board level. So I will continue to do just that, as I have done in the past.
Ms. Morris?
I see our role as a school board mainly as to provide transparency with our finances and oversight with the superintendent. What I don't appreciate as a parent is having top-down decisions. I would like, again, I said, local control on our school board decision-making councils, and although, yes, legally, we do have the right to choose our curriculum, we are not given the funding to do so. We are only given the funding to buy curriculum that has been approved by the board.
Thank you. You'll take this question first. Can you explain your position on the pros and cons of charter schools in Fayette County?
Me?
Yes.
I am very passionate about public education. In fact, that's a big reason that I'm up here. I'm worried about how much money has entered the races for our school board race. The amount of money in particular in this race has surpassed anything in our past, and so it concerned me, it was a red flag that we were having too much outside influence on our school board. So I'm kind of a shy person, this is not something that I ever expected that I would do, but my personality and my drive is to protect kids and our community. My mother is a retired educator, she has a teaching certification, she's a professional educator. I think reducing the qualifications to teachers to where anybody can do it with a political science degree or geology degree, I believe that the certifications create a well-rounded environment for our children and that we don't want to back off of that. So I am strongly against charter schools. I have spent years lobbying against charter schools. I have tried to place public education-friendly candidates in office. I've worked tirelessly to stop charter schools from entering this community and keep them out of our community, and I'll continue to do so until the bill is repealed.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
So I want to take the first point about so much money in the school board race. Money is an outcome of working hard, and I'm not going to apologize for working hard. I've raised money from Republicans in this state, I've raised money from Democrats in this state, and I'm excited that they support me and that so many people view my experience as that important to continue on the school board. That being said, I've been very clear about this since day one on the school board, I don't think Fayette County needs charter schools. I think the largest argument people make about charter schools is that it provides parents with choice, and in Fayette County, we have more than 30 non-traditional academic programs that already provide our parents with a great amount of choice. We should be focused on expanding those academic programs. For example, at Maxwell Elementary, only 41% of applicants were placed in the Spanish immersion program, and that's not based on merit, that's just based on the number of seats available. At SCAPPA, only 11% of students are admitted, and there are many more students who qualify. So we should be focused on expanding these high-quality programs. We should also be focused on having high-quality schools in every neighborhood, and then the entire conversation about charter schools will be moot.
Thank you. And we move to our final question. Mr. Nash will take this first. What do you consider to be the primary weakness with FCPS, and how will you correct it?
Yeah, I think this goes back to my answer about achievement gaps. I think that the primary weakness is that student outcomes vary from school to school and that we have to provide the resources so that schools can meet the diverse and unique needs of students. I think a secondary weakness is that, as I talk to constituents, they have a lot of questions about how we spend our $700 million budget, and so I think we have to continue to fight for fiscal accountability and transparency, just as I've done over the last 10 or 11 months, and I think that we have to be accountable for every decision and every dollar, no matter how it's spent. So I think those two things continue to come up as I go door-to-door, and I'll continue to fight for both as a board member.
Ms. Morris?
I think the biggest thing that I would like to bring to the table is being an independent voice. I'm not here as a stepping stone for my career, and I'm not saying that any of us are, but I'm just saying that this is important to me. My kids live here, I want to stay here in my community, and if I am elected, I'll be here for the long haul. My kids have another 10, 15 years in our schools here. My background is in finance, and so I actually feel like I'm very well-qualified to handle finances and accountability and transparency. I would also like to improve on the voting process. You know, sometimes the community finds out very last minute that we're going to have our board meetings, and then back-to-back meetings that where the public is supposed to have comment and input are avoided when we have these special meetings called. So I would like to have some more normalcy, and we know these votes are coming up, they're not a surprise that the budget needs to be voted on, it's not a surprise that the superintendent needs his evaluation. We know all this stuff needs to take place ahead of time, and I think the public deserves time to process it, and board members deserve to educate themselves on every issue.
Thank you. And now we'll turn to our closing remarks. The candidates drew a second time for the order of closing remarks, and they will each have 90 seconds. Ms. Morris, you drew first for closing remarks.
I thought I could do second. Oh. Again, I just want to thank you guys for coming here tonight and to the league for sponsoring this event. It's hugely important, and I'm honored to be here. Like I said, this is not something I thought that I would do. I know that I'm not the best public speaker, and I know that I come off as shy, but anybody that knows me, they know that I'll fight for our families. I've fought side-by-side for our teachers or with our teachers and working families in Frankfurt, and I believe that as a school board member, that especially nowadays, that that's extremely important to be able to have those connections and to make the time to do it because it is important to me and my family. The other thing that I would love to get the opportunity is some of the changes that I've seen as a volunteer and a parent. I know, again, that my personality is the way that it is, but people are comfortable talking to me. So teachers come to me, they tell me what they'd like to see, they know that I'm not going to use it against them, or I'm an ally of our educators, and I think that our community knows that. Again, I was endorsed by the biggest organization of teachers and public employees. I was also endorsed by our working families here in Lexington. They're real people that live here in our communities, and I was also endorsed by the National Organization of Women, and I'm honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nash?
Thank you. I'd like to just reiterate my thanks to the league and to the library for hosting us. I think today showed a clear contrast between my opponent and me. I'm pleased to be the most experienced candidate in the race with the boldest vision for Fayette County schools. While my opponent supports policies that would undo much of the success we've seen over the last five years, I continue to be a champion for all students and will rely on my decade-plus of experience in public education to make decisions in the best interest of students and schools. Because of my professional work, as I shared, I have line of sight into states and districts across the country who are innovating and making progress for students. I'll continue to bring that innovation to Fayette County schools. Within my first two months as a board member, I asked more tough and poignant questions about our fiscal audit, financial accountability, and transparency with community stakeholders than any member had done in such a short amount of time. I listened to my constituents and imposed yet another tax increase last month, showing my willingness to not only stand up for District One, but also to speak on behalf of low and middle-income earners across Fayette County. District One deserves a board member who has a deep understanding of complex education issues and who will make tough decisions, just as I've done in the past. I'm asking for your support in making Fayette County Public Schools the best school system in the state, and I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you so very much to both of our candidates. I would mention that in one of our previous questions, the boundaries for District One were misstated, so our apologies for that inaccuracy, but we want to thank again the candidates and our sponsors, the Lexington Public Library and the League of Women Voters of Lexington. If you're interested in league membership, please check out our website at lvvlexington.com, and be sure to vote in the general election Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you so much for joining us.